Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, February 8th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10th, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 29th, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 29th, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video. You will be sworn in, and you will be required to give your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Cantor?
Yeah.
Mr. Hughes?
Yeah.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. Orozco? Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Stanton has been excused. Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, infinite, and just as it is. Mr. Tropoli, you might swear in the professionals, please.
Yes, professionals, raise your right hand. Swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self, your God.
I do.
Right, tonight, we have Ms. Beam, Mr. Conliffe, and Mr. Howard all sworn. Thank you.
Approval of minutes. Regular meeting, December 7th, 2020. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Seiya, Cantor, Gonzalez, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Hughes?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Seiya. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens? You're muted, Rich.
Sorry about that, Eileen. Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez? You're muted, Matt, as well.
He froze up.
Matt, you're frozen.
Mr. Gonzalez is frozen.
Yeah. Turn the heat on, Matt.
20 degrees outside, so he must have really got froze.
Yeah.
Matt, you'll have to go out and come back in. I don't know if he even hears me. Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
A regular meeting, December 14th, 2020. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, Seiya, Gonzalez, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Seiya?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez? He's still frozen. Matt, can you wave or something, so I know?
I'm telling him.
Chairman Nansen?
He'll come back.
Okay, regular meeting, December 21st, 2020. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Orozco, Seiya, Cantor, Gonzalez, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
That was Mertens.
Mertens, motion. Do I have a second?
I'll make your second.
Second, Mr. Seiya. Can we have a roll call? And please let the record reflect, Mr. Orozco just joined the meeting.
Yes, I have that. Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez is still not with us. And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. No vouchers this evening.
Correspondents?
Yes, I have one letter from Mr. Pape regarding the application for 366 Ramtown-Greenville Road. They are scheduled to be heard this evening, and after reviewing the letters from the township engineer and the planner and the Environmental Commission, they have decided to look at the comments and concerns and possibly change their plans. They've asked that this application be removed from this evening's agenda and rescheduled for April 12th, 2021 without further notice, and he's granted the board an extension of time through May 30th, 2021.
I'm going to check with Mr. Trop- Mr. Tropoli.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Based on the notice that they have, and if they do any changes, wouldn't they have to renotice the changes?
Depends what the changes are, Mr. Chairman. If it's still a warehouse and perhaps the square footage changes, no. If they even pla- if they're changing the use into something else, yes. I think that carrying the application is appropriate based on what I understand this evening.
Their plan is to keep the use the same, Ron, and then just to reduce the size of the proposed addition on the site?
Right, that's what I suspected.
I don't know that they have to renotice for that. In theory, I haven't seen it, but based upon the TRC I just had, it should, in theory, make the application more conforming than it is. So I think it's less than what was noticed, so I think they're fine.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, if anyone's out there is here for case number BA 20107, 366 Ramtown-Greenville Road LLC, this case will be carried to April 12th, correct?
Yes.
April 12th, 7 o'clock, with no further notice.
And it'll be the same meeting information?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further correspondence, that's it.
Okay, Resolutions, case number BA 1923, Yeshiva Imac Hacora Ik. Resolution granting use variance approval. Eligible voters: Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Seiya, and Gonzalez. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Mert-
Back on.
Mr. Cantor?
Cantor.
Seconded by Mr. Orozco?
Right.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Mr. Gonzalez, who has not rejoined us yet. And motion carries.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, case number BA 20124, Daniel Leahy and Ashley-
Grab the tissue.
McGregor, I believe that's McGregor.
Meeger.
Meeger. Variants for a single-family dwelling on an undersized lot. Application of Daniel Leahy and Ashley Meeger as applicant and owner seeking bulk use, bulk variance approval to construct a one-story, single-family dwelling with the basement on premises known as Block 120, Lot 666 and 67, 171 White Street. Expiration date, May 7th, 2021.
Mr. Chair, I see the applicant, Saron. I see Mr. DeFalco is here. Rich, are there any other witnesses in this application this evening?
Rich, you're muted.
Hi, I don't know if you heard me. Are there any other witnesses in this application?
No, just the three of us.
Okay, Mr. Chair, shall I swear everyone in then?
Swear everybody in.
Thank you. Dan and Ashley and Mr. DeFalco, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self, your God.
Yes.
Yes.
I do.
Okay, witnesses are sworn, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I guess, Mr. DeFalco, you're going to take the lead?
I will, yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This case is for the construction of Dan and Ashley's new single-family home. It's on an undersized lot on White Street, and the request is to permit the construction of the home on a lot that is about 1.76 acres, where the zoning calls for two acres. Presently, without the dedication of right-of-way, the property is 1.995, almost two acres. But we're going to fix the right-of-way problem that's on White Street, that there is no real right-of-way, so we're dedicating along the edge of the road, a nice wide right-of-way, but that leaves us with 1.76 acres.
Rich, real quick, Rich, are you testifying as engineer?
I'm testifying as engineer and planner.
Okay.
If need be. It's a bulk, it's a bulk variance for the lot size only. That's the only variance they're asking for, it is a permitted use.
Okay. Do you want to put your qualifications over there? I know you've been here before, but-
Yes, I'm a licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I own JKR Engineering and Planning Service. We've been in business since the 80s, and I've appeared before Howell, planning and zoning boards, and many other towns in Mammoth Ocean County, and our company basically works for private individuals, and we do lots of subdivisions and site plans, and we've been in the model for 30 years.
We accept your credentials, Rich.
Thank you very much. So, so real quick, we looked at the A5 is our variance plan. A5 shows a key map. You want to pull it up if you want, Eileen? Rich, I could probably just cut through it, if you don't mind. Not at all. So, Mr. Chair and the rest of the board, they're in an ARE2 zone. They have, like, they, before the dedication, were barely under the two-acre, they were 1.995, I probably would have rounded up, honestly, but they have to dedicate some, some road width, so they're at like 1.7, Rich, plus or minus? 76, yeah. So, the only reason that we're here is because of that. That is it. They're allowed to put a single-family home, they comply with the setbacks, the coverage, the height, everything else. It's simply because of the area, and quite honestly, if they weren't dedicating the land, I would have expected, Rich, to just round it up to two acres, and they wouldn't even be here. So, while, you know, typically, we want to go through the whole dog and pony show, here, it's simply a barely undersized lot for a single-family home, that's what's permitted. That's the only reason that they're here.
It's not even based on the undersized lot, based on septic, correct?
No, well, no, it's the two-acre zone, and they're under two acre, it has nothing to do with the septic.
Okay, I just was clarifying.
So, it's just, it's just simply the land area, and that's it. So, um, you know, I take no exception to it, there, you know, the zoning anticipates a house on this property, it's almost where we want it to be, it doesn't have any, okay, so, Rich, is there any negative impact to the, to the surrounding land uses, or the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance? No, there's not. There's an R2 zone behind us, which is a 20,000-foot lot zone, so we're like a transition between a full two acres and what's behind us, so I think it fits in pretty well with the zone plan. I do want to go through Charlie's letter real quick, because there's some things in there that we would want not this to be a blanket subject to Charlie's letter. I want to go through that, Charlie, if we could. So, that's his letter dated January 7th, and-
Rich, I think I can help you speed through it real quickly. So, as far as the checklist waivers, yes, or waiver for all easements covenants, you're going to provide a deed as a condition of approval for the right-of-way dedication, right?
Yes, we will.
And that's not atypical, these are all lots in this section of town where the original deeded property line goes to the center of the road and not to the, you know, where you would typically be off the edge of the road, so that's, that's something that's good for us. The septic system, you guys have approval from Mammoth County Board of Health, correct?
Correct, we have a permit, yes.
And that's for a three-bedroom dwelling?
Yes.
Is there any proposed habitable attic or basement space?
The attic is just a true attic, there's a pull-down stair and a closet to get to it. Basement is a traditional basement, I mean, they may finish it off in the future, but it's a, it's a basement. It's not going to increase the bedroom count, however.
I'm just, you know, if there is any bedroom count, they have to go and get Mammoth County Board of Health approval for sand, just to make sure the septic is all right. They do need a waiver of curbside sidewalk along the frontage. Having said that, looking at the aerials and other adjacent properties, saying that, I wouldn't take an exception to that. We don't have the mandatory contribution to the sidewalk fund, so that's no longer required. The payment section for the driveway, Rich, you guys have no issue complying with the ordinance?
Not at all.
Okay. Uh, let me just see what else we got here. Drywells, you have an issue providing drywells for the water quality storm for the, just for the dwelling?
Well, it's in a real sandy area, and my thought was, it's almost a two-acre lot and a very small house, that by the time the water runs across this property, it's going to infiltrate 90% of it right to the ground. I mean, we can do it, but it's just another expense that they would have to go through. I don't really see a big impact on this.
So, Mr. Chair, I did look at the soils, it is in a sandy area town, we typically require drywells, you know, if, Rich, if you guys, as a condition of approval, can provide like a test pit with like a soil, like a bill test, you know, just indicating that the infiltration rates are good, you know, I would have no, no issue with that. Is that all right with you, Rich?
Yeah, we did three test pits for the septic approval, so we have data, and it's a sandy-
Yeah, if you have an infiltration test, just something to verify the rates that you're, you're talking about.
All right, and if not, we can put it in. I did a calculation, roughly, it's 11 yards of stone gives us the volume for the water quality storm, which is one big truck of stone buried in the ground. So, we could do that.
Okay. So, and then as far as the utility, so you do have the septic approval, Mammoth County Board of Health checked it for separation, everything like that to adjacent properties. I had a question, you're proposing a new water service to Pearl Street, that's the dead-end street at the southwest corner of the property.
When that water line was built, New Jersey American built that last year, and they left the meter for us to connect to.
How about the sanitary, is that, are you guys in the sanitary service area?
We're not in the service area. We actually tried that first, and then we got a note from the engineering department on the connection. We had, it's a gravity connection, if we weren't, we'd be able to get to it, but that's a year-plus process, and we're not going to wait that long, so.
I would say, Mr. Chair, you know, I have no acceptance of this application, we're not a 40,000-square-foot or less lot, you know, it's, you know, we're one and a half acres plus, so I have no exception to that. The one comment I do have with the septic, Rich, and kind of going back to the soil logs and apologize, I missed my note here, the logs showed there was like a restrictive layer eight and a half feet down. Are you anticipating having to excavate through that for the septic?
Actually, that, that, where the septic was, it was a sandy clay loam, not a, not a lonely clay, so the classification is not the same. So, it is permeable throughout the back of the property where the septic is going.
Okay. What I would just say, Mr. Chair, with that and the drywall, is if they can just provide an infiltration test for that, just showing it suitable, I have no issue with granting of the relief for a drywall. I, I just want to make sure we had the issue with another lot where, you know, someone was digging down 14 feet and replacing, and then spreading that out over the lot, I just, if that is needed, they will need a soil import-export permit from the township, but, you know, they'll cross that bridge with the township engineering department if it, if it is required.
Real quick, Rich, the driveway, is that an asphalt driveway?
Asphalt, yes, from the, from the street right to the garage door.
Okay, which, which, where, what is the flow direction of the driveway? I, I can't see the grade lines.
The street is higher, and the garage is next height, and the turnaround spot is lowest.
Okay, and it's gonna, it's gonna flow out the turnaround?
In, in general, that direction, yeah. I mean, there's a couple of spots that flows out of.
Okay.
Rich, in general, the lot flows from north to south, and that pattern is being maintained, correct?
It's more like east to west, yeah.
Oh, do, yeah, I might have my bearings wrong. Yeah, so from top of the page to bottom of the page, and that's not being changed, correct?
Not at all. The contours behind the house are not being changed.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Cantor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moretti?
No, sir.
Mr. Seiya?
Charlie? The right, what, can you be more specific on what, the right-of-way that we're expanding?
Yeah, so, in this part of town, you had a typical where deeds were to the property line to the center of the road, so what the applicant is proposing is essentially a 25-foot-wide right-of-way dedication. This is a local road, as classified in the master plan, so the required full right-of-way width is 50 feet, so this property on this side of the road, they're only required to dedicate that 25-foot-wide half-width, which is what they're proposing.
Roger, thank you.
I've got just one, one last thing, if we could, on, on the last sheet, Charlie, under conditions. We talked about a tree removal permit, I think we're not going to cut those trees down at the back for the water service, we can snake between the two trees with the water line. You did talk about soil fill permit, if we need that, we'll do that with the engineering department. Under the outside agencies, I assume Howell's Board of Health is Mammoth County Board of Health, it's one and the same, the probable?
Yeah, that's, we put that both in there, it ultimately goes to Mammoth County Board of Health, so.
Right, which we have that permit. Under D, Howell Municipal Utilities Department, that's not a checklist item for a bulk variance, so I, I know that we're not going to-
Yeah, so, so basically, Rich, just the connection to the water is going to be subject to New Jersey American Water, so you'll have to comply with whatever connection requirements they have and details and so on.
Right. The Environmental Commission had no comments, the police department, I don't think we need to apply to the police department for a single-family home, and the fire bureau will be done during the building placement process, they're going to do a fire review of all the plans, so I think that'll cover that.
And you provided a compliant turnaround for the driveway, right? In accordance with the ordinance?
I believe it's larger.
Mr. Mertens, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Orozco?
I'm okay.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions, but thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion to open the public.
I'll make a motion to open the public, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Hughes?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Seiya. Eileen, we're going to open the public for questions and comments in this application.
The chairman has opened up the hearing for members of the public that have questions or comments on this application only. If you do, please use the Raise Your Hand feature, we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to be sworn in, have audio and video, and give your name and address. For anyone who is new to the hearing and missed it, case number BA 20-107, 366 Ramtown-Greenville Road was carried to April 12th, 2021.
With no further notice.
With no further notice, sorry. And we have someone coming in, ask them to unmute. We have Stephanie Lino here.
Hello. I'm sorry, I'm muted at this, there you go. Hi, how are you? Stephanie Lino with Denicio Lima Garcia.
Okay, before you go forward, who will be testifying or asking questions tonight?
Or me, his wife, because he doesn't speak well English.
Well, that's okay, so Stephanie, we have to swear you in, so raise your right hand. Okay, you swear the testimony you'll give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self, your God?
Yes.
All right, may we have your, we see your name is Stephanie Lino, L-I-N-O. What is your address, please?
53 Pearl Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, our question was, what was the, the, I'm sorry, I'm reading the letter that we received, what was the proposal for the curbside sidewalk, which we didn't understand, it kept breaking up?
There is not going to be any curb or sidewalk required, because the surrounding area does not have it on White Street.
Got it, okay. I was just wondering, because we're the dead end, we're literally right next to the, the couple, Daniel and Ashley, I think is her name?
Yes.
We're right next to them, we met them, very nice people, but we were, we were concerned about what we received with the sidewalk and the curbside.
No, it's not going to affect Pearl Street. The only thing that they're going to do at Pearl Street is bring the water line that's at Pearl Street, they're going to connect to that water line, that is it.
Okay.
Everything else comes off of White Street.
Got it. Okay, that was our question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Anybody else from the public?
Are there any other members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on this application? Please use the Raise Your Hand feature. I don't see any other members of the public wishing to ask questions.
Okay, can we have a motion to, to close public portion of the hearing?
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by who?
Mr. Cantor.
Mr. Cantor, second, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes, can we have a roll call, or all in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Okay. Mr. DeFalco, you wish any final words?
I think everything was covered, I think we're good to go.
Okay, Jennifer, you have any further?
No, sir, I'm good to go.
Charlie?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just one comment, so, and it's a formality, so if the board does rule favorably, the, some of the building and lot coverages were just off a little bit after the right-of-way dedication, I just ask that, Rich, that be checked and clarified under residential compliance, just recount, and there's no variance required either way, just for clarity.
Yep.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
From Mr. DeFalco. Charlie's spoken in his review letter about deeds of consolidation for the lots, the applicant has no difficulty with that, right, Rich?
That's correct, and we'll, we'll put that together, I guess we'll give it to the player to approve, that's the engineer.
Well, Charlie and I would take a look at it and get back to you on that, so that'd be a condition of approval also, should the board look favorably on that application. All right, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tropoli, that was consolidation of lots, you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Consolidation, subject to a board engineer and attorney review.
Thank you.
Well, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application based on the finding of facts, I think our professionals are on board with this, and also, I appreciate that the, these people are going to be very conscious about the trees, and they're going to work around them, so that's always a good sign, so my motion's to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mertens, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Seiya. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
He disappeared.
Jose?
Jose, you're muted.
Off the bridge.
Exercising, I guess.
I don't know where he. Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Tropoli, can I go to Mr. Gonzalez since Mr. Roscoe's missing?
Well, he would be voting anyway.
He can do that, yes. Go ahead.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you, and Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Great, thank you.
There's Jose.
Thought you were sprinting over the bridge there, Jose.
Okay, next case on the agenda. Eileen?
Yes. That's.
What's your last name? Okay. Hey, next case on the agenda, case number BA twenty-one-one-nine. Carolyn Glyptus, bulk variance for miscellaneous structures in the setbacks. Application, Carolyn Glyptus is applicant owner seeking bulk variance approval for elevated pool deck with associated privacy fence patio wood deck with associated pavilion and paver walkway. And a setback on premises known as block one forty-one, lots twenty oh seven, ten Ravenswood Court. Expiration date May nineteenth, twenty twenty.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Bob McGowan. I'm the attorney representing the applicant in this matter. We have provided notice and we've submitted that to the board, so if someone could acknowledge that you have jurisdiction, I'd appreciate it.
Bob, the notices are in order and the board accepts jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, this application is a homeowner application. Uh, do we have uh, Carlin uh, included in this at this point? She is on the line.
Mr. Tropoli, you mind swearing her in?
How many witnesses do you have this evening?
Carlin is going to provide the testimony relative to the application.
That's fine. I'll ask, uh, Carlin, could you raise your right hand, please, for take the oath? You swear the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth, so I'll be God.
Yes, I do.
Yes, state your name, please.
Carlin Glyptus.
All right, thank you. You're a witness.
Okay, thank you. Just to give the board a little bit of a summary of what brings us here tonight, I mean, obviously, the application speaks for the variances that are required. Uh, the short history on this is that uh, Carlin, in the previous relationship uh, the the gentleman who was with her did a number of these things. Um, built improvements in the backyard, uh, in a fenced-in area. Uh, but apparently failed to get all the permits that he was supposed to receive. Now, Carlin, of course, is responsible, because she's the landowner and she continues to be the property owner in this case. The house is a duplex, is a side-by-side duplex. Uh, I'm sure the board is familiar with this area, the town, if there are a number of uh, two two family side-by-side units. Um, off of this cul-de-sac, and it's in pie-shaped uh, pieces of property. Um, when she did, uh, apparently, there was an inspection done by Victor Cook at one point. Uh, and in doing the inspection, realized that there were some existing structures, uh, which had not been permitted. Uh, in which he also believed violated some of the zoning setbacks that are generally applicable in the area. He served notice of that violation. Uh, sometime after that, Carlin uh, came to us. Um, and we've been working, trying to straighten this out with her since then. Uh, Matt Howard is, of course, aware of the situation as also. Uh, we've been communicating with him. Perhaps, just to give the board a a clearer idea and and the public, I assume you can put it up on the screen for them as well. Uh, Eileen, could you put up a copy of the Lakeland survey? Which shows the existing conditions, so that everyone can get an idea of what we're talking about. Can, I could only see a part of it. Can that be shrunk somehow? Thank you. Uh, as you can, in the lower right-hand corner is a colored picture, um, and as the board and members of the public look at it. You can see that there's a side-by-side garage, one garage is hers, and that's her driveway, that's one to the left. And then there is a adjoining house to the right, and that's the neighbor's home. And those houses line up with uh, this the survey that you can see. Uh, you can see one uh, unit that's labeled two-story framed dwelling. It shows the main dwelling, it shows enclosed porch. It shows a walkway, it shows pavilion, a pool and a deck area around the pool. Those are the things uh, that we'll be addressing tonight. The uh, we have a letter, of course, from uh, T and M, the review letter, which outlines uh, describes the property and so forth. Uh, I believe it's a inaccurate description of what we're looking at here tonight. The only comment I would point out is I've just said, it's uh, the property is currently occupied by one half of a uh, two-story framed dwelling, a duplex. And I think the board is aware of that. So if we can go on, and and what the letter allows to respond, what is the letter, I think that would help us go through this the easiest. With that, um, Carlin, well, the first uh, issue that is raised in the letter is two A, the enclosed porch side yard setback. And it says that the applicant should provide testimony regarding the date of construction and whether any prior land use approvals exist. I'm going to ask Carlin to address that, but first, so that the board can have an idea of exactly what we're talking about. Again, Eileen, if you could put up photo number one, which is number fifteen nineteen? Yes.
Uh, regarding the enclosed porch, the side yard setback, um, that has a land use approval from my office. Back at the filed map, uh, the setbacks were set at eight foot to the side and zero foot in these duplexes. Why the principal structure uh, didn't require a setback on that side. So regarding that, I think uh, I think we're right there.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, that's basically what we're going to try to suggest to the board, that that was in good form. The um, next item then is the elevated deck side yard setback. And again, so we have a better idea of what we're speaking of. Eileen, if you could put up photo number fifty, it's number two, it should be fifty-nine nineteen?
The series of photos.
Do we have it?
Yes, hold on.
Okay, that's the, yeah, that's the porch, and then the next photo. That's it, okay. So that's a picture of the deck and obviously the covered area of the, from the foreground is the pool. Eileen, would you uh, explain to the board what the condition uh, of this is, and you know, why it's where it is?
Were you asking me that?
Yes.
I said, Eileen, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did say, I mean, I went close.
So as uh, Mr. McGowan said, these were all projects that were done by a man I was living with, um, who I then had to get a restraining order against. So I apologize for all the things that he did, um, and hopefully I could do whatever I need to do to fix it. But um, the land that this was built on was pitched downward, so everything, the privacy fence is built um, six feet from the uh, from the deck with permission from our, from the neighbor. Um, it's for safety purposes and also uh, for privacy. Um, since the the land is pitched downward, if that's the correct terminology.
So the the fence is essentially six feet high off of your deck?
Yes.
And then, and the deck extends out in a level of
Yes.
In in a level manner, of course, but the ground itself drops away, so that it gets higher and higher off the Is that correct?
Correct.
And be, and and when you did this, or when it was done, you did inquire with your neighbors, see if they had any objections and they did not. Is that correct?
Well, that's what I was told, but yes, but I'm still friendly with them, so they seem to not not have a problem with it.
Okay. Uh, Eileen, if you would, go to the next picture, just so that the uh, board can see the um, the picture of the entire thing. That's that's the, that's the picture of the pool, it's an above-ground pool. It has the decking, and you can see how the yard slopes uh, to the rear of the property. The um, the elevated deck rear yard setback, if we could go again to the uh, survey from Lakeland, which was the first survey that we showed. Carlin, your property is board, it has a fence on all sides, it's entirely fenced, well, not, it's entirely fenced in, starting from the corner of your house going back, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And so, the board can see that the uh, the deck, in in order to to put a deck around the pool uh, where the pool is, that the deck pretty much has to go for the distance it does. Um, and it does get close to the your property line, but what's be, what's behind your hole, Carlin, as far as the, can you describe the property behind there?
Behind what, from where the
In other words, beyond your property line, uh, what what?
Is it the wooded area?
Okay, in fact, it it, we've we've come to learn that it's part of a um, stream corridor or overflow stream corridor, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Eileen, uh, we also submitted a Google map photo. Could we get that up?
Mr. McGowan, real quick, the the shed that's back there, i- it says a wooden shed?
Yes.
Who's, uh, whose shed is that?
All right, let's let's jump ahead and talk about that. Let's, yes, everyone can see the shed, and if you'll take a look at the survey, you'll see that the shed appears to be, and is in fact, behind the property line. The shed is, however, in front of the fence line. And uh, Carlin, would you explain to the board uh, whether, when you put that shed up, or was that shed there when you purchased the house?
That shed was from the previous owners. I actually believe that it was from the owners before them, and so was the fence. So I, when I came to see the house, all of that was existing.
All right, so so when you, and how, how long ago did you buy them?
Two thousand seventeen.
Okay, and how, do you know how long the owner before you lived there?
Um, not off the top of my head, but I believe that they were the only the second owner to the original owner.
Right, I I, the deed record does in fact reflect that Carlin is the third owner. Eileen, if you could now go to the Google map. All right, so going back to the
Bob, one second. That was not left off the exhibit list, so just add that as A nine on your exhibit list.
Thank you.
Ariel, thank you.
Okay. So if the board will look at at that, it gives you a a very good view of how the property lays out and what's on the property and so forth. The shed is slightly uh, to the left lower part, uh, the head of the tree area from the pool. And you can see that the fence runs behind, or that there is a fence that runs behind that shed.
Well, Mr. McGowan, real quick.
Yes.
Is, is that her property that that shed sits on?
No, it's not, but it 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 absolutely is not. In fact, it it appears to be, it's the township's property.
Well, we can't give relief for that.
Sir, uh, that's clear, we understood that. We understand that that you can't give us right to uh, have a uh, structure on township property. We're not asking.
Only that, do you have? You might have to remove that shed.
Like, what's your plan?
I've also had, we've also discussed that, and I think that's hopefully something we can address uh, with the zoning office in the in the building.
No, no, no.
We're going to address that.
Okay. Uh, Miss Glyptus, uh, understands that that's the township property. That she does not have a right to to continue to maintain the structure on the township property. Then all I was going to explain to you is is how it appears that it ended up there, both the fence and the shed.
I I don't care.
Okay.
I I don't care, we don't even need to waste time on that.
All right.
Going to have to remove that shed off of that property.
Correct, and the fence.
Along with that fence, you're going to have to move that fence.
Okay, uh, we understand that and we expect that direction.
Okay. Mr. Howard?
Excuse me?
I I, I'm Matt.
Yeah.
Okay, do you understand, you know, they they gotta move that shed and they gotta move that fence?
I understood, along with the other slow variances they need, that's why they're here, to work out these issues.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the applicant will remove both the shed and the fence.
Okay.
We understand that. Thank you. All right, so then, to the next point. Next one is, I believe, D, I think we've gone through uh, numbers two, number two, A, B, C, and now B.
Jump in any time.
Yeah, so um, Mr. Chair, they're they've said it pretty straightforward so far, so uh, Matt, did they get a permit for that above-ground pool?
I don't believe so. Let me double check on that, though, for you.
Carlin, perhaps you can even answer the question for the board on that. I think you were in the process of applying for that, and that's when these issues all really came up.
Actually, it was a hot tub and a deck extension that prompted this application.
Okay, thank you.
Above-ground pool.
There you go.
Yeah, so what what somewhat complicates this application, Mr. Chair, is there is the stream at the back of the property, the long brook. Um, our township ordinance does require a one hundred-foot stream corridor and a hundred-foot stream quarter buffer on top of that. Um, a good bulk, you know, majority of the entire site is within that full two hundred-foot buffer and uh, corridor. Um, as far as the stream corridor itself, you know, uh, at least the above-ground pool, the elevated deck, the shed um, are are definitely within that. Um, having said that, this property was created by subdivision, and I believe nineteen ninety-eight. And that predated the township's uh, stream quarter buffer ordinance, and the file map doesn't show any type of um, buffer uh, or string quarter on the subject property. Um, you know, from the board's perspective, you know, it doesn't look like, I I looked at available, uh, you know, FEMA firm maps. Um, you know, to see what the property was in the flood zone. It doesn't look like any of the improvements, at least from the area, are within, you know, uh, an AE or flood zone X or anything like that. It's all outside the mapped areas. Um, you know, I think from the board's perspective, if we're going to grant relief for these different structures, you know, including the shed to be relocated on the property, to be within the the buffer and ordinance, I think um, you know, as any condition to approval, the applicant just needs to demonstrate for the board that all these improvements, um, you know, don't require flood hazard area permit or are exempted by a permit by rule. Um. Bob, did you guys have anyone look at this from, you know, an engineer or look at this from a flood hazard perspective?
Uh, I I've reviewed it with an engineer on a uh, graphics basis, you know, uh, uh, an engineer that I'm very close with, I asked for his input and so forth. Um, we, it, we have, one of the surveys indicates that all of the, that the prop, the actual property line uh, is co-terminous with the stream approachment line. Um, and in trying to look at the uh, actually, uh, Carlin did some research and came up with the National Flood Hazard Maps. Um, and all of her prop, all of the property at her property line, at her actual property line, which is in between the back of the pool and the shed, and it leaves the trees at the bottom of the picture, also to the left. So at her grass area is all in that area of minimal flood hazard. And I'm sure that, you know, I can get verification of that.
Yeah, so what I would say, Mr. Chair, is um, the township also does have an exemption for repairing zones in New Orleans that if it's not a dedicated buffer or conservation easement, uh, the applicant can have up to a quarter acre of impervious area on a residential lot for the structure and associated structures. If the board is going to rule favorably on the application, I'd I'd ask, is the condition of approval is that they just enlist, you know, some type of environmental professional, just to demonstrate that a lot of these, you know, that no flood hazard area application or permit is required, or it's covered under some type of permit by rule. You know, I know there's a lot of permit by rules for pools, uh, elevated decks, uh, additions to a a single-family residential dwelling, as well as it's not in the floodway itself. Um, it's only in the outer, whatever, a hundred fifty-foot buffer. Um, you know, I think as a condition of approval, that's something we should require, Mr. Chair.
Do you have a problem with that?
No, the applicant would certainly consent to that and appreciate the support.
So, and then, just to keep going with it, so the elevated wood deck on the south side with the pavilion, that's at five point seven feet to the stairs where ten foot's required, and then also they have a res, a paver walkway in the side yard. That's, you know, one point five feet from the southerly property line where five feet is required. So all this was done without permits or anything like that, right?
This is what we understand, I believe the only thing that was actually permitted was the enclosed porch.
So, it is in, created by a file map, there wasn't any restriction in the lot coverage or building coverage, Mr. Chair, at the time, so really, it's not a coverage question we're asking here, as long as there's no flood hazard issues. It's just bulk setbacks, you know, from all the property lines. And then, just one technicality I will note for the board, this is, does have technical frontage on Strickland Road at the back of the property, so like, if you go into the actual definition of the ordinance, this is a technical front yard. Having said that, it's the effective rear of the, of the building, I just wanna note that, so if you're gonna grant relief of these things, that can be, you know, subsumed in those different variances. The pool itself, Bob, how, how high is that at the highest point at the rear? Cause the property slopes considerably, right?
Carlin, could, were you able to measure that?
Well, I got that email after it snowed, but I, I believe it's a four foot pool, so I, I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is, it's four feet all around the pool.
Yeah, so at the, at the lowest end of the pool where it's the highest, so you're four foot and then six foot, so effectively the fence is ten feet above grade.
Correct.
But it's right.
Okay. And you haven't had any complaints from the neighbor, to your knowledge, regarding impact to, you know, air, light, and open space or anything?
No, no complaints.
All right.
We obviously gagged, noticed everyone within two.
Yep. And I noted, obviously, that there's no impervious coverage or building coverage limited zone, but you haven't changed like the physical grade or anything like that, or rerouted the way that stormwater flows around the property with any of these walkways? Everything generally flows to the long brook and not onto any neighbors?
Correct.
And then, Bob, I just have a bunch of plot details, so I'll just preface, all these setbacks, they weren't provided on the survey, a lot of this was me scaling from the plans, so these are approximate. So obviously, we're gonna require as the board an updated adable survey with all these actual dimensions, you know, verifying these setbacks. Also showing the two hundred foot property on the, on the survey.
Well, we did submit, I, I don't know if you got it, Charles.
You have the two hundred foot list, I just wanna, you know, just around the lot, just show the border with the revised survey when you submit it.
Okay.
Hey, hang on, Charlie.
Yep.
The Lakeland survey, that, that's not an accurate survey?
So, they have setbacks to the existing fence and things like that, to the shed over the property line, along the southerly property line, they have setback dimensions for the, the raised pavilion, but as far as the walkway in the south yard, the elevated deck along the north and the west property line, you know, that's scaled dimensions from a plan, you know.
That, that's not Lakeland, that's not a survey?
So it's a survey, they just didn't provide the dimension, I scaled it and put the number in my report so we could hear the application.
No, I know, but the, the drawing that I have has the, the measurements on it.
Yeah, so I don't have, the version that I have, I, I didn't get setbacks, you know, if we're looking at the lot, the northwest corner of that elevated deck, I don't have setbacks to the property lines.
I, I do, the, the survey sheet that I have does.
Okay, let me.
The, the date that we're looking at, Charlie, is three, five, twenty, twenty twenty, and it's re, was it revised?
Yeah, so I have the same date, but I have setbacks for the existing fence to the property line of like point nine feet, and
Yeah, it definitely, it definitely shows some dimensions, it's not all of them, Wendell.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 those are dimensions, Mr. Chair, the existing fence to the property line, those aren't dimensions.
We need an updated survey with all of the setbacks.
Yep, correct.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure, cause I'm sitting here looking at, at dimensions here, so, okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I scaled those dimensions and I rounded down to give a little, hopefully a little leeway, so.
I could just summarize kind of, you know, cause I've taken a look at this and brought this application here, really, and Charlie covered it mostly, but we have a side yard setback for the, the walkway. We have a side yard setback for the deck on the southern portion of the property. The wraparound deck around the pool has a rear yard setback issue. The pool itself, we might need to scale off, but it could have a setback issue, there were no permits issued for the above ground pool. There, the deck, even beyond what the survey shows, was proposed to extend further towards the rear, and a hot tub was proposed further towards the rear directly behind the pool. So those are two items that should be addressed. The fence, even if it's relocated on the property line, as, as it gets along Strickland Road, has a, since it's a front yard setback, when it gets within twenty-five feet, it either has to be reduced to four foot tall, fifty percent open, or the board can grant a variance. So those are the items that I had flagged as needing to be addressed, and I just wanted to kind of summarize that for the board, because there is a lot going on here.
Hey, Matt, question, you, you said the hot tub and everything, that's proposed, or?
That, that was denied, and that's what prompted me to require this application again, even after code enforcement was out there about a year ago. So, I don't want to get a bunch of variances approved or decided on, and not have the full scope of future work covered, because then the applicant would be coming back if they wanted to go ahead and do that project.
Carlin, do you have any intent of proceeding with the hot tub application?
That wasn't, that wasn't, when I decided to, I wanted to do that, and I was gonna do it with a permit, once I found out that all the other stuff hadn't been done with a permit, and I'm not intending on doing that now.
Okay, so, the wraparound deck and the, and the hot tub included now, you won't be able to do it even after this decision, okay?
And Matt, just to clarify, it looked like the deck, like you said, it was gonna be a future hot tub, and might go further, so they're gonna be required to get all construction and building code permits for railings and all the such, right?
For everything, yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
So you got, so let, let's just be clear here, there's two front yards. You're gonna have to have a two front yard variances, correct, Matt?
Well, the, the fence going towards Strickland Road, if that stays six foot tall, that would require a variance. I don't see any front yard setback requirement off of Ravenwood Court, though.
Okay, that, that's all I wanted.
And Matt, to clarify that, that's, that six foot high stockade fence, that's continuous along all the properties on that Strickland, right?
It appears so, yes.
Yeah, okay, so it's not just the one property, it's?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Hey, Charlie, you got any more?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's, let's address real quick the, the two hundred foot, the, the hundred foot stream corridor into hundred foot easement, or buffer. Would that touch this back of this property, the two hundred feet, Charlie?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, let me see if I can bring up two representations, Eileen, can I share my screen real quick? Can you guys see the map that I'm showing?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is the FEMA flood map for the, the long brook there. So it's hard to tell, cause it's zoomed in, so it kind of gets grainy with the aerial, but you can kind of see the pool and the deck here.
Right.
Orange line is the limit of the floodway. Now, that's not a, you know, that's not a hundred percent, this is just from, you know, a GIS map, but it certainly looks from the map that, you know, that is outside of the floodway, the applicant has agreed, you know, they will provide, you know, some type of assessment from our environmental profession as the condition of approval, that anything, you know, with the pool and the deck and such, they'll get any permit by rules or after the fact for the, for those items, and just, let me see if I can have another, sorry, that's the wrong one. So, and this isn't a hundred percent accurate, so this is from available NJDEPGIS data, so this blue line is the state, you know, GIS layer for streams, and then I've done in GIS, I've offset it a hundred feet and an additional hundred feet from there, so this red line is your effective hundred foot stream quarter buffer. This orange line is the, sorry, hundred foot stream quarter, the orange line is the hundred foot stream quarter buffer. So as you can see, the entirety of the property is within, you know, the, the stream corridor and stream quarter buffer, as far as the, just the stream quarter itself, you're looking at the pool, the deck, the shed, the fence, things of that nature. Having said all that, let me see if I can.
But the property predated all of that, correct?
Yes, and I'm gonna pull that up in a second, Mr. Chair.
What about the pool and the deck, did that predate that?
No, so the property and the dwelling and all that, that was created in, by file map. This is two twenty-six dash one, I believe.
Nineteen eighty-eight, is that file map?
Is that right, Matt, what I said?
Nineteen eighty-eight, yep.
Yeah, so it's this property right here, you can see this township open space, they've got a stream encroachment line, that's the township open space, that follows along the rear of the property, so they didn't have any stream quarter buffer ordinance at the time of the creation of the lot.
Okay, but whenever they put the pool here, the pool in the deck.
Yes, so that ordinance for the stream corridor and stream quarter buffer, Matt can correct me, I believe came in at oh four? Is that right, Matt?
I'm not gonna lie, I don't have that off the top of my head.
It's either oh four or oh seven, so I mean, if any of the stuff, other than dwelling in the backyard and the shed, that all looks like it's, you know, after that effective date of that ordinance.
Charlie, I believe you're correct, it's around the two thousand and four timeframe, because Councilman Tabasco was really a pet peeve of his as it, as it was being adopted over.
Exactly.
And I believe it was amended in oh seven, cause I think that one time every stream was tried to make a C one water, and then that got overturned and.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Three hundred feet at, at first, but then they, they reeled it back. Okay, my, my question is to you, Charlie.
Yep.
Matt, if, if they would have come in for building permits for this, would they have been allowed to do that with this, at that, that point in time?
Yeah, honestly, most likely, because the, we try and treat some of these existing developments, if they predate an ordinance like that, we're not trying to limit what they're doing in their backyards, especially if it's a improved backyard, like it's your lawn, you know, going outside the property, of course, not, notwithstanding, but most likely, we would not have triggered stream quarter review on this.
Okay, thank you for your honesty, yeah.
Yeah, and then, Mr. Chair, just to add on to that point, there is for repairing buffers, there is an exemption, as, as far as applicability, it says for existing single family residential planted lots, where there's no dedicated buffer, you know, dedicated by easement or something like that, you know, you're allowed to develop for a single family dwelling and associated improvements up to a quarter acre. The lot itself is only seventy-nine hundred square feet, so, you know, you'd have to be ten, you know, almost eleven thousand square feet to, to trigger that, so the whole lot would have to be impervious to trigger that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Mr. McGowan.
I appreciate the conversation, thank you.
Well, I, I'm just trying to cover all the bases right now, you know, where, where we're at, and then move forward from there. Okay, we'll let you continue, sir.
I, actually, I think as a result of that discussion, you did cover all the bases, and if there's, therefore, if there are any questions or additional testimony that the board or its professionals would like to hear, let us ask those questions of Carlin, but I think we covered it all.
Okay, Jennifer, I'm gonna let you jump in.
I'm good, I think Charlie really has taken the reins on this one, and it really, rightly so, is more his issue than my issue. So, if he's good, I'm good.
Well, my question to you, is there any debt, do you see any detriment if, if the board looked favorable of this?
I do not, assuming they comply with whatever Charlie requires them to do, I do not see any detriment, so I think we're okay.
There would be Charlie and Matt.
Yeah.
Well, yes.
Like I said, as a condition of approval, they'll have to provide some kind of assessment from environmental professional, just saying that the pool, the deck, the shed, once it's relocated, you know, would be covered by some permit by rule, because it's not in the floodway, and it meets all the conditions of the permit by rule, if they can't demonstrate that, then they would need to get any required DEP permits, you know, if, if they be required.
From a planning perspective, from the township's standpoint, I have no, I take no exception to you granting the relief, assuming that whatever conditions are subject of Matt and Charlie are met, from a planning perspective, I take no exception to the granting of the variances.
Um, Matt, real quick, do you have an issue with the fence down below? Keeping that a six foot stockade there, or do you think that really should be a four foot?
No, I have no issue, I, I've been to this area and driven around, it's not creating a sightline issue. I believe this is probably a developer's fence, maybe even back from the eighties, or maybe some of them have been replaced without permits.
I agree, I think, I agree with you, I think it's a developer's fence, I don't think it's, I, I don't think it's, I mean, you're right, it may have been replaced over time, but I think it got put there with the development.
And there's multiple properties that have it all the way along the stretch.
Well, see, I, I totally agree, but I, I, the reason I would like to see it stay, you know, six foot stockade, is because it border, is right, is for security reasons, personally, you know, being on Strickland Road.
And privacy, I mean, it's, it provides privacy a hundred percent.
I agree. And if the board members, you know, we'll, we'll see what they have to say, but.
I mean, we have put in our annual report, for as long as I'm in the professional for this board, that the secondary frontage be treated as something other than a front for testing purposes, so I think this is a perfect example of that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
While we have this picture up, if the back portion of the fence is to be removed, where on this, what we're looking at, would it now have to reattach, I guess is the right word?
I don't think it's on this view, I think it's farther.
Well, actually, I could, I could address that, I believe.
I can see it right there.
If, 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 if everyone will look at the picture and see where the shading of the fence goes from dark to lighter, yes.
Yes.
Right there, that's where I believe the property line is real close to that point.
I think it's back further.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I can see the shed through the.
Yeah.
These there, okay, thank you.
Mr. Cantor?
Can, can we get back to, to the full board view, please, there you go. See the property line would be back behind a pine tree. Okay, Mr. Cantor, do you have any further questions?
No, if, if one of the professionals would be so kind as to sum up exactly what we're voting on, that would be greatly appreciated.
We'll do that in a moment. Mr. Hughes?
No, I think I'm good at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Moretti?
Oh, I'm good at this time.
Okay, Mr. Sam?
Well, sir, I just, for, for Mr. Cantor, I believe we said that that fence line is actually the front yard fence, correct, Charlie?
Yeah, it's a, it's a technical front yard, the, the actual front yard is on Ravenwood Court where the house fronts, and you know, it's technically, I guess, a through lot, so it has a, a second technical front, but it's the effective rear yard, so we're just granting the relief for this technicality of, of the configuration of the lot.
Got it. I'm good.
Mr. Roscoe?
I'm, I'm good.
Mr. Martins?
I'm good based on, you know, Charlie looking into the environmental issues, and other than that, I'm good.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any further from you, Charlie?
Nothing further than Mr. Chair.
Jennifer?
No, sir.
Mr. McGowan, do you have any further testimony you wanna put on the record, or?
Oh, I, again, I, I believe that everyone covered it pretty thoroughly, and I appreciate the input.
Okay, at this moment, I will take a motion to open the public for questions and comments.
I'll make that motion to open the public, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Hughes, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Martins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, okay, at this time, we'll take questions from the public and comments.
If anyone in the-
If anyone in the public would like to ask questions or comment on this application, the chairman has opened the hearing up for the members of the public. Please use the raise your hand feature, and you'll be brought into the meeting one at a time. Again, you will need audio/video, you will be sworn in, and you'll need to give your name and address. And I am not seeing any members raising their hand.
Last call, anyone from the public wish to comment or ask a question of this applicant?
No one's raising their hand, no.
Can I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Hughes. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Roscoe, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Mr. McGowan, you have any final comments?
No, my appreciation to the board for hearing us out, thank you.
Okay, Charlie, I'm going to turn to you. Give the board a brief description and overview of what variance is in what we are voting on tonight, please.
Yeah, so we, uh, we were discussing closed porch is, uh, is already approved, so there's no issue with that. The elevated deck on the north side of the pool, um, the ordinance requires a 10-foot setbacks. It's approximately 2.6 feet scaled, uh, from the survey from the north of the property line. Also, along the westerly property line, which is the rear, it's approximately 5.4 feet from the rear property line, or 10 foot is required. Uh, the height of the fence for the, uh, the privacy fence for the deck, our ordinance requires the fences should be no greater than six feet in height when setback, they require front yard setback in the zone. Um, having said that, this is an elevated fence on a deck that's elevated, so you know, at the highest point, the northwest corner of the deck, it's essentially 10 feet above grade, where a maximum of six is, um, uh, is permitted. Obviously, the applicant said it's required for safety issues and then also privacy. They indicated that they haven't had any issues with the neighbor or any complaints, no impact to air later open space. Um, along the south side of the property, uh, there's a slightly elevated wood deck, it's got a couple steps with a pavilion on it. The steps of that deck are setback 5.7 feet from the southerly property line where 10 feet is required. Uh, a paver walkway connecting the front of the dwelling to the rear of the dwelling uh, is setback approximately one and a half feet from the southerly property line where five feet is required. Um, the existing fence along Strickland Road, as we said, that's a technical front yard. Uh, the ordinance requires it to be, uh, maximum four feet or 50% open. We acknowledge that that's probably a developer's fence, six feet in height matches the other fences along the adjacent properties. Um, we touched upon the fence itself, that's not on the property, that's in the township open space. The applicant indicated they will relocate the fence, so it's on the property, the shed as well. Um, the one thing I just want to get clarification on the shed, um, Bob, when that gets relocated, are you going to comply with the setback requirement in the zone, or are you going to be asking for relief from that setback?
It is my understanding that Carolyn can address that, but I believe she's simply going to remove the shed and not replace it.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's cleaner, Mr. Chair, because it doesn't require any technical accessory structure in the front yard. Um, and then the last piece of it is, um, you know, the entire property, like we said, is within the, you know, 100-foot plus 100-foot stream quarter buffer. That was adopted after the formation of this lot. None of that was applicable at the time of the filing of the map, so the dwelling itself, you know, is predates that. Um, it's the pool, the deck, uh, the shed, the pavilion that we're talking about. Um, as I noted, uh, my review of FEMA mapping, it doesn't look like the pool, the deck, and the pavilion are within the flood area. The shed is going to be relocated, so it's inside the property line. If the, uh, if the floodway does correspond with the back of the property there, you know, shouldn't be an issue. The applicant has also agreed that they're going to provide some environmental statement or assessment from a professional indicating, you know, all permit by rules that these would be covered under or obtain any permits as would be required. Um, so that's really what we have, Mr. Chair, that's the sum of it.
Board members, do you get all of that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, make it a little bit clearer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Okay, at this time, what is the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, um, I'd like to make a motion along with the stipulation of, obviously, the, you know, we've talked at length about the shed and the fence, and the applicant said the shed's going to go. And if the fence moves, I agree with the six-foot is fine, what's there now is fine, because everybody else there has the same thing. Uh, that coupled up with all the documentation that, uh, Mr. Conliffe and Mr. Howard would like in order to, you know, clean up this file and get everything together with all the testimony, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Cantor, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, I am sorry that a new homeowner has to go through and jump through all these hoops in order to make her property acceptable, but yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, I'd also like to echo what Mr. Cantor said, she's gone through quite a bit there, and I'm glad that we can get things together here, and I vote yes.
Mr. Martins?
I'm going to vote yes, too.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Oroscow?
Yes.
Mr. Saya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
First of all, you know, I'm sorry you had to go through this, um, you were living with the person that you thought was doing the right thing, and it's technically not your fault. Um, you know, it kind of leaves you holding the bag, which I'm sorry for. But based on supplying a, uh, updated survey with all the setbacks, all the proper permits to bring everything into accordance, you know, uh, you'll have to work with Mr. Howard on that. Uh, you know, there will be permits that you're going to have to get to bring it forward to where it's up to snuff in case, you know, one day you might want to sell it. And you want to make sure that all the permits are in place for everything. I know it's after the fact, but you know, make sure those permits are in place, that way you don't have to come back through this again. Because if they're not in place, and they go to get a CO for the property, you might have to come back. So just make sure that all of that is done. Uh, thank you for coming forward and taking care of this. A lot of people would not have done that, they would have just kept fighting it and fighting it and fighting it, but you know, thank you for doing that. And my vote is yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Work with Mr. Howard and Mr. Conliffe, you know.
May I ask, will I get like some enough time to do this? I mean, I don't know what the time provisions are, but um, finding somebody to help me with it.
I'll let Matt address that, um.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we have a foot of snow on the ground, to say the least, and, um, from apartment requirement stage, we could definitely give you a few months and wait for the resolution to come out and formalize everything that way.
Okay, and, and, okay, I could talk to you after, Matt, like I said.
The thing about it is, it's basically paperwork now, you know.
Yeah.
I would just, I would just recommend that through the entirety of the process, you maintain open and honest communication with Matt, as long as Matt understands where you are in the process. Let's say you have a hiccup in moving the fence. As long as Matt is aware of what the circumstances are, it makes it easier on everybody to deal with it, if you're.
I had, I had just reached out to a few reputable contractors, and none of them wanted to take on my backyard. They didn't want to be associated with this, so I'm just getting a little fearful of them going to be able to find.
Well, now that you have your approvals, it might be a different situation. It may have been because they weren't interested in getting involved in a circumstance where you had to go to the zoning board. Now you have your approval place, there's very clear direction on what you need to do. But what I would like, I said, just maintain consistent communications with Matt. So long as he's aware of where you are, he can be very clear and concise on what has to happen, we need this to happen soon. But if he knows what's happening, if you run into a hiccup or whatever, it's better than not letting him know, and then us saying what's going on, and he doesn't know what's going on. Just keep communicating with him, and as long as he's okay, the town will be okay.
Okay, so Matt and I are going to be best friends.
The thing about it is, your fence contractor, just tell him to go see Matt Howard.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, Max phone's going to be ringing, ringing, ringing.
Every day.
Good luck with that. Matt, do you have any further to add?
No, Jen put it right. I just don't fall off the face of the planet for a year, we'll be fine. Um, I can issue zoning approvals much easier now because all the variances are there. The key, your contractors with the building plans for the deck, the, the, all that, um, that's, that's really your big key right now.
Okay.
Yeah, and we also have the, uh, vote the resolution in next, and, you know, in the next meeting or next month or whatever, so there's even a little time there.
Okay. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, board members, any further business of the board?
Sure.
Our next meeting is when, Eileen?
You're muted, lady.
Matt keeps doing that to me. Our next meeting is February 22nd, that's two weeks from tonight.
Cool.
Okay?
Okay.
No, it's really cool, it's only 8:30.
Yes.
Do not jinx us.
Let's just hang out here and chat a little longer.
Okay, I love you, but.
We're done.
I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hughes?
Back on.
Seconded by Mr. Roscoe, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody have a safe one.
Good night, everybody.
But in the next meeting, next meeting.
4:22.
Right.
Good night, guys.
Good night.